All right, we are experiencing technical difficulties, but it looks like we are back okay. All right, good. Thank you. First resolution tonight, resolution number one is authorizing the closure of Oak Avenue for a neighborhood block party on Saturday, August 20th, from 4:00 to 10:00 p.m. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Trustee Giudano?
In favor?
Trustee Quigley?
In favor.
Trustee Hayes?
In favor.
Mayor Eklund?
In favor. Resolution number two is rejecting all bids received in connection with the cleaning and janitorial services contract for Village Hall, Community Center, and the library. All the bids were above our budget. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Trustee Giudano?
In favor?
Trustee Quigley? In favor.
Trustee Hayes?
In favor.
Mayor Eklund?
In favor. So we now move to resolution three, which is authorizing the rebidding, calling for sealed proposals with respect to the cleaning and janitorial services contract for Village Hall, the Community Center, and the library. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Trustee Giudano?
In favor?
Trustee Quigley?
In favor.
Trustee Hayes?
In favor.
Mayor Eklund?
In favor. Resolution number four is to approve Tuckahoe Schools' request for the use of the Main Street Tennis Court for the Tuckahoe High School varsity tennis team for the fall of 2011 and the spring of 2012 seasons. The girls' varsity team will utilize the court weekdays starting on Monday, August 22nd, to Friday, October 31st, from 3:15 to 6:00 p.m., weather permitting, and the varsity boys' team, beginning on Monday, March 12th through Friday, May 25th, 2012, the certificate of liability insurance will be provided. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Let me just mention, not directly on this topic, but this tennis court, I think, is one of the hidden gems in Tuckahoe. It's brand-new, it's in great shape, I've played there several times this summer, and I know from firsthand experience, the DPW is doing a great job of keeping the leaves off it because it's surrounded by trees, but it's just, it's a nice little, you know, place to play right in here in the middle of Tuckahoe.
And you're right, it is kind of hidden there, it is, it is a gem, and I'll thank Senator Klein again, he actually gave us a grant to go ahead and refurbish that court about two years ago, so, and thank you Frank for keeping it maintained well.
Trustee Giudano?
In favor?
Trustee Quigley?
In favor.
Trustee Hayes?
In favor.
Mayor Eklund?
In favor. Resolution number five is standard workday and reporting, be resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby establishes the following as standard workdays for elected and appointed officials, and will report the following day's work to the New York State and local employees' retirement system, based on the record of activities maintained and submitted by these officials to the village clerk. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Trustee Giudano?
In favor?
Trustee Quigley? In favor.
Trustee Hayes?
In favor.
Mayor Eklund?
In favor. Resolution number six is accepting donations for the fireworks event of July 23rd from the following donors. The first donation is from the Generoso Pope Foundation in the amount of $6,000. We had an $800 donation from Giovanni's Auto Body. We had a $500 donation from Amy Pollan, Marado Properties, from Harold Zalant, Strasfield, and Spielberg Esquire, that's a law firm. We had a $250 donation from Medi Ray, and from Bond, Shonik, and King Esquire. We had $200 donations from Angelinas of Tuckahoe and Dr. J Chumsky, he's a dentist in Tuckahoe. We had $150 donation from Brondell Incorporated and P.E. Control Services. We had $100 each donations from Ben Romeo, Harpo's Imported Car Service, from Solar Electric, from Main Street Pediatric Dentistry, from Smith Cairns Ford Lincoln Mercury Mazda Subaru, and from Jonard Industries. We had $75 donations each coming from The Beverage Mart and the Campus Group Companies. We had $50 each donations coming from Martin Franckel, DVS, from Phoenix Fitness, from the Old Stone Mill, and from the Westchester Funeral Home. And we had $25 donations from Automotive Upholstery and Convertible Tops, from Francis Apicella Esquire, from Tuckahoe Wireless, from F. De Giacomo &amp; Sons Plumbing, from John Custom Taylor, from Dams of Fly Designs, Village Realty of Westchester, Tuckahoe Coiffurs, and Lake Isle donated two trams for this event, so I personally want to thank each and every one of these, if it wasn't for their sponsorship and contributions, we couldn't have had such a great event, and I will say it was a fantastic event, so do I have a motion for this?
Motion.
Any second?
Second.
Any discussion, if anybody wants to talk a little bit about the event?
Trustee Giudano?
In favor?
Trustee Quigley?
In favor.
Trustee Hayes?
In favor.
Mayor Eklund?
In favor, thank you. Resolution number seven is approving payment of vouchers in the amount of $500,441, consisting of abstract number eight, for $55,365, abstract nine, for $176,080, abstract number 10, for $36,963, abstract 11, for $20,610, abstract 12, for $134,703, and abstract number 13, for $76,717. The three largest invoices paid were $110,223 for employee health insurance premiums for the month of August, $37,471 for work on the DPW drainage project, and $28,347 for serial bond principal and interest payment. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Trustee Giudano?
In favor?
Trustee Quigley?
In favor.
Trustee Hayes?
In favor.
Mayor Eklund?
In favor. Resolution number eight is ratifying board action approving and authorizing the village clerk to issue a special permit under the cabaret license to Ristorante Chianti for acoustic music and singing outdoors which occurred last Thursday, August 4th, between the hours of 7:00 p.m. and 10:00 p.m. This special permit is granted on the condition that, at all times, Ristorante Chianti shall comply with and not exceed the noise ordinances of the Village of Tuckahoe found at section 15-39, section of the code of the Village of Tuckahoe. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Trustee Giudano?
In favor?
Trustee Quigley?
In favor.
Trustee Hayes?
In favor.
Mayor Eklund?
In favor. Resolution number nine is authorizing the village clerk to issue a special permit under the cabaret license to Stevens Green for live bands outdoor on Sunday, September 25th, 2011, between the hours of 4:00 and 10:00 p.m. This special permit is granted on the condition that, at all times, Stevens Green shall comply with and not exceed the noise ordinances of the Village of Tuckahoe found at section 15-39 of the code of the Village of Tuckahoe. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And discussion. I'm actually going to ask Lieutenant Margaret Bellis if she would weigh in, a question that we had at our work session is whether or not we've had any complaints at, we'll just say this establishment, the other one actually already occurred, so, but maybe you can let us know too what the other establishment last Thursday, if there are any noise complaints from any of the neighboring residents?
I sure will. Good evening, Mayor and Board. We reviewed all of the permits issued that were similar over the past year and a half. Actually, we went back to 2009, and there were no reported problems. The only thing that we found on the record was last week, it wasn't so much a complaint as it was an inquiry about the hours, was someone who backed up to the Chianti Restaurant, actually from Eastchester, just asking the hours of the event, and when all, we did send a patrol officer there, and there was nothing going on at that time, they wrapped it up shortly after 10, maybe a few minutes after 10, so we have not had any complaints with any of the limited cabaret licenses that have been issued from the village.
Right. That's what we wanted to hear, thank you.
Okay.
It's nice to hear they're being good neighbors. Thank you very much.
That's right, okay, thank you.
Resolution number 10 is approving, I'm sorry, we need to do a roll call, sorry.
Trustee Giudano?
In favor?
Trustee Quigley?
In favor.
Trustee Hayes?
In favor.
Mayor Eklund?
In favor. Resolution number 10 is approving the Westchester Italian Cultural Center request to have Oak Avenue closed from 5:00 p.m. to the end of each event, for three outdoor film screenings, which is open to the public on the following dates, Thursday, August 18th, at 7:30 p.m., Thursday, August 25th, at 7:30 p.m., and Thursday, September 1st, at 7:30 p.m. These are movies that are going to be filmed right in Depot Square, so we want to thank the Westchester Italian Cultural Center for sponsoring this event. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And discussion, we're going to list these events on our local cable channel, so anybody who's interested can certainly look there, as well as our website, to see the specific movies that are going to be playing. They're obviously Italian movies, thank you.
Trustee Giudano?
In favor?
Trustee Quigley?
In favor.
Trustee Hayes?
In favor.
Mayor Eklund?
In favor. Resolution number 11 is authorizing the mayor of the Village of Tuckahoe to execute a retainer agreement with the law firm of Silverberg Zalantis LLP, as it concerns the commencement and prosecution of an action or proceeding regarding the premises known as 99 Main Street here in the Village of Tuckahoe. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, I'd actually like to ask our counselor if you could just explain to the public what we're doing here?
Sure, Mayor. At 99 Main Street, we believe that it's an unsafe building, and there's a proceeding to be brought under state law and under our village code with respect to correcting the condition of the unsafe building. We've had the deputy village attorney look into the matter, he began the process somewhat, and now we're going to outside counsel to prosecute the proceeding and finish the process to have the building declared an unsafe building and to correct the condition and your group monies in favor of the Village of Tuckahoe.
Excellent. Well said, and expedite the process too, so we're very happy to get this underway. Thank you.
And I'd just note that for people who don't know 99 Main Street, they certainly would know, this is the scaffolding eyesore bluish-purple building that's been boarded up and in this condition for at least three years, maybe longer now.
Yes, definitely.
Hopefully, we're finally going to get some movement on that.
Certainly hope so. Roll call?
Trustee Giudano?
In favor?
Trustee Quigley?
In favor.
Trustee Hayes?
In favor.
Mayor Eklund?
In favor. Resolution number 12 is authorizing the hiring of Horizon Fence at a cost not to exceed $3,400 for the installation of a fence along the Village Hall retaining wall. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Trustee Giudano?
In favor?
Trustee Quigley?
In favor.
Trustee Hayes?
In favor.
Mayor Eklund?
In favor. We're now at the portion of our agenda where we're going to have some reports from our department heads, and I'll first call up our Lieutenant Bellis, if she has anything she'd like to report to us tonight.
Thank you. It's a short list tonight, but on behalf of our chief who can be here tonight, I was actually happy to come and speak to you about National Night Out, which has happened, it was August 2nd. I thank the village for the support of this event. Tuckahoe has been celebrating this event since 2005, nationally it has been celebrated for 28 years across the country. Many other municipalities joined in the efforts as well that evening, but this event could not be possible. I can't thank them enough, and so I just have to take this opportunity, the Community Fund of Tuckahoe, Eastchester and Bronxville, has graciously funded so many of our programs. Not only that, they champion everything that we do, they were in attendance that evening, the executive director, Melinda Burge, along with their board member, Steve Darty. I thank the members of the village board who attended that night, it's so important for our community to see that we really do work together and we support each other. And just to give the public, for those who may not know what the event really stands for, it's a partnership, we're trying to build partnership between the police department and the village and our residents, because we really do believe that's the best way to help them, help themselves, and keep everyone safe. So it's neighbors meeting neighbors, and we provide the environment and the entertainment to draw everyone in, family, so it's a great family event. There were many participating agencies, but I just want to name a few, just to show you who comes out in support of our village, the Westchester County DA's office, Victims' Assistance Services, Maxwell Institute, the Westchester County Department of Corrections, EVAC, Eastchester Police Department, and all of the community volunteers, that many people didn't even realize, as you're going around, you're enjoying the games and the crafts and the events, those are all manned by volunteers, and again, it's just, it's a great statement of what this community really is, so if anybody out there has not had the opportunity to come and enjoy the evening, they should definitely do so, it's always the first Tuesday in August. Again, I thank the chief, and just to note, and you may not realize this, I mean, we are a small department, almost every single member of our police department was in attendance that night, so whether they were working or they're on their free time, that really is a testament to the fact that I work for one of the greatest police departments in this county, anywhere.
That's a good record.
That's right. So, anyway, I just wanted to put that out there, and I do want to throw one thing out there, the Tuckahoe Police Organization will host its first annual dinner date at the Bronxville Women's Club on Friday, September 9th, at 7:00 p.m., and our honorary is Mr. David Pope, and the Tuckahoe Police Organization has chosen Mr. Pope for his many contributions to the community and to the police department, and for many of the programs that he provides for our children, so we felt it very, very fitting that he should be our first honorary. So I welcome, anyone who has any questions, you're RSVP to myself, you can either call the desk at 961-4800 and ask for me, and, or you can call my line, which is 231-0204, and I'd be happy to give you more information. And that's really all I have to report.
Thank you very much, Lieutenant.
Thank you.
Next up, I'll ask our superintendent of public works, Frank DiMarco, if you have anything you'd like to add tonight?
I just want to add that I think everybody has noticed that we've paved Fisher Avenue, and we were able to do it at night minimizing the traffic, at really no additional cost to us, being that core contracting was paving Bronxville, they had asked if they could pave Fisher Avenue, and I thought it was a great idea. We are out there pruning trees, we're just all over the place, where I began, I couldn't even start, but we are holding up traffic throughout Tuckahoe to DPW, and we are getting a lot of work done. Other than that, any questions?
It's quite a summer. Thank you, Frank.
Okay.
Bill, do you have anything you want to add tonight? Nothing from our building department? Miscellaneous business, our next village board meeting is going to be on Monday, September 19th, and we have a community meeting, which is next Tuesday, August 16th, 7:00 p.m., and this is going to be held at the Westies Storage Center, which is down on Marble Dale Road, so I urge everyone who would like to come on down, and it's a very nice building, so they have tons of parking there, so it's a great place to come on in and get an opportunity to chat with all of us, somewhat informally, non-televized meeting. This brings us to our Board of Trustees member reports, and I'll toss it over to Deputy Mayor, Tom Giordano.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few brief announcements with respect to the planning board, there's a special meeting that's been called for August 31st at 7:30 p.m., and the sole agenda item is the Glenn Mark Project. While no meeting is currently scheduled for the zoning board for August, please keep your attention to a potential meeting to be scheduled on August 24th, which may yet happen, so keep your eyes open, and if it does, it would be, the items on the agenda would be 42 Yonkers Avenue and 100 Main Street. The chair of the zoning board has committed to everything that he can do to make the process as quick and efficient as possible, keeping in mind that people's time is valuable. The other thing that he wanted to announce is to solicit any ad hoc members who may be interested in serving on the zoning board, with assurances that an ad hoc member will be a participant who's given equal weight in the discussion, and someone who's really a part of the process in reviewing the zoning code and making decisions. So if anyone is interested, there is a form that you can either pick up at the Village Hall, or you can find it online for being a volunteer, which we will accept, and we hope that we have some dedicated members of our community who will reach out and give us some of their time and insight. Finally, I just, I missed an opportunity, and I did want to say something, as you had prompted Mayor Eklund about the fireworks on 7/23, which as always is a really beautiful event for our village, and it's one that involves a lot of resources that all come together in a way that make a very special gathering for our community, from the, all the work of the DPW to get it set up and prepared, to the work of our police department to make sure it's safe, it's usually a hot summer night, but it's also a great place for our community to gather and to show off to other people what we can do, and the fireworks are spectacular, they really are, unequalled to fireworks that I've seen, and they're up close and personal, and I wanted to also offer a special thanks to all those, to the Pope Foundation and David Pope, and all of our, the commercial and business interests and professional interests who gave of their wherewithal to support that, and ask you, the public, to keep that in mind, it's these businesses that really need our support, and they make our community great, and I ask that, if, you know, if you have a choice is to go to, I've said this before, to outside to another community or stay within hours, try to support our local businesses. It makes our community great, aside from the revenue that it gives us, it helps our village to grow and become more well-known. I think it's a beautiful place to live, and it's our merchants and commercial interests that help towards it. Anyway, that's all I have.
Well said, thank you. Trustee Quigley?
Yes, thank you. We've got some events going on that I think are worth noting. The first coming up next Monday, week from today, August 15th, at 11 o'clock in the morning at the Tuckahoe Library, is John Mariani, who is a Tuckahoe, longtime Tuckahoe resident, and quite well-known as a food and wine critic. He's currently a columnist for Esquire Magazine and Bloomberg News, he's written several books on cooking and Italian food. He's going to be discussing his work, again, at the library next Monday, August 15th, at 11 o'clock. The library, as I've mentioned before, and I think people know, is celebrating its 100th anniversary this year, and we're collecting old photos, memorabilia, anything that you might have that would, you know, sort of fill out the history of our Tuckahoe Library, to put together a presentation that'll be done later, actually, I think probably early next year. Any questions, you can just call the library at 231-3154. We'd love to have some of these old photographs or old events posters, whatever, that would just, you know, give us a really good history in retrospect of the library. As you mentioned before, the library is continuing to offer passes to the Museum of Natural History in New York. Again, go to the library, this is sponsored by the Friends of the Tuckahoe Library, and details can be reached at the library. For the Eastchester-Tuckahoe Chamber of Commerce, on Wednesday, September 7th, from 6:30 to 8:30 at the Eastchester Public Library, will be a presentation on how to protect against cybercrime. This is obviously a very timely topic, as we get more and more immersed into the Internet and people's nefarious ways about the Internet. So again, this will be on Wednesday, September 7th, 6:30 p.m. at the Eastchester Public Library, how to protect against cybercrime. As I think we all know, Senator Klein has his 2011 summertime symphonies, they're all around the area, I'll just mention a couple coming up in our media vicinity, on Wednesday, two days from now, August 10th, at Eastchester Town Hall, at 7:00 p.m., will be risky business. On Monday, August 15th, at 7:30 p.m., the Westchester Swing Band will be at the Palom Gazebro in Palom, and on August 17th, it comes to Tuckahoe, 7 o'clock, Strawberry Fields will be performing on Depot Square, right in front of the Generoso Pope Building. So the one to really keep an eye out for is Wednesday, August 17th, 7 o'clock, Strawberry Fields, right here at Depot Square. And finally, Westies, where we're going to be having our community meeting in another week or so, has been running a pajama program. You have another week or so to bring new pajamas and books to children, drop them up at the Westies site here on Marble Dale Road, they will be donated to kids who need them, and that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to add too, if any of you folks haven't seen the Strawberry Fields band, it's well worth it, you definitely want to come out, you can sit there, close your eyes, and you think it's 1964 all over again with the Beatles playing, it's really, really fantastic. Trustee Hayes?
Thank you. A few announcements for this evening. First, our environmental committee has scheduled their September date for Wednesday, September 7th, at 7:30, and also our tree committee has scheduled their next meeting date, which will take place on Wednesday, September 14th, also at 7:30. In addition, over the past few weeks, I have continued to meet and speak with various condo and co-op boards in our village, and also our rental building owners, and again, if you are a member of one of these boards or rental buildings, if you're an owner or a manager, and have not yet had contact with me, I ask you to reach out to me either through email or contact the village clerk's office, they'll be sure to get you in touch with me. In addition, we're working on scheduling our first big consolidated group meeting during the last week in September, and I'm hopeful that our next village board meeting will have a firm date, time, and meeting place set up. As for our community center, they have once again scheduled defensive driving class, which will take place on Saturday, August 20th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m., and for further details on registration, our residents can contact John DiArco at 914-231-0299. And we are happy to announce that our 35th Annual Tuckahoe Challenge Road Race has been set for Sunday, September 11th, which will include both a one-mile and a five-mile race, and check-in and registration will begin at 7:30 in the morning that day at our community center, and the first race will take off at 9:00 a.m. Registration forms have been sent out to all of last year's participants. In addition, runners who are interested in participating can download the registration form on our village website, or pick one up here at Village Hall. There will be many awards, raffles, and prizes given out that day, and of course, we want to thank the generosity of our primary sponsor, who's once again Hudson Valley Bank, and also many of our local businesses who helped support this event and make it possible. And one final note, we've been having issues with our Verizon Vios feed, our live feed, so I'm thinking that it's not working this evening. Over the past two weeks, we've been in touch with Verizon, they've had technicians out here, and they're continuing to work on figuring out what the problem is, and the last information we received, as of last Thursday, was that they determined that our module was faulty, so they were in the process of ordering one, but now due to the Verizon strike, we're a little bit behind, and we're not sure exactly when this is all going to be taken care of, but we'll continue to be in contact with them, and we request that everyone continue to be patient, and we're sorry for this inconvenience, and that's what I have for this evening.
Thank you very much. Keep our fingers crossed there. I just have a couple of very brief items to talk about. I'd like the residents to know that at our work session on Thursday night, we had a meeting with the assessor that we use, which is the Town Assessor, as well as the law firm who handles our taxor share claims, and it was a very good meeting, it was attended by our village attorney and our treasurer, and we discussed a whole host of topics. We discussed the taxor shares and the process of how they're filed, and what recourse, you know, we have, you know, what we can do to try to protect the financial interests of the village budget with respect to that. We talked about a whole host of things, revaluation of all properties in the village, just an awful lot of things, and I'll tell you, it's kind of depressing when you're done at the end of that meeting, you kind of get a sense that there's really no easy way out, I guess if there was, it would have been fixed long before we all got on this board, so we continue to work very hard to try and find ways for us to salvage our budget, and let's just hope that the economy does improve somewhat, so we're not continually pressed with some of these taxor shares. But it was a good opportunity, they both felt that they hadn't met with the village board, and we have all new members here, so they wanted to introduce themselves and talk to us, and it was a very good meeting. I'd also like to talk about the surveys that we've been doing, we've had, as I mentioned in our last meeting, we have surveys that we're conducting, written surveys, in each department of village government, and I'm happy to say, we are getting a tremendous amount of response back. We have well over 50 so far that's come back just recently, I think some of the extra interests has come about because of some of the media attention that this has received, I want to thank them for that, and it's just a really good opportunity for And it's just a really good opportunity for us as managers of the village here to get an understanding as to what the customers, which are the residents, what they are really looking for in terms of the services that the village provides to these residents. So, we're going to be compiling all these surveys, and later on in the fall, we're going to do an analysis and just try to get an early snapshot as to what the data is revealing, see if there's any immediate things that we need to address. But we definitely plan on keeping this going, and I want to thank Trustee Hayes very much. She was instrumental in getting these all up onto our website using the service, free service that we have for it. So, so far, so good. I want to report on that. And today, as everyone knows, it's, maybe you call it Black Monday where the stock market drops 600 points, but I want to give a little good news. It's always good to end up on a high note. We recently received notice that our quarterly sales tax payment was in excess of what we had anticipated. It was $212,096, which brought our year-to-date total to $826,654. Now, we budgeted $775,000. That's what we anticipated. So, it gave us a surplus of $51,500. So, that's a good way to end my report. And now, this brings us to the second opportunity to address the board. If anybody would like to address the board. And having nobody here to address the board, if there is no other business tonight, I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Second? Thank you very much. Till next time, Tocco. Have a very good night.